Sign in, please. For our stand, also want to make a notice and a reminder that this will be recorded and is being recorded and will be posted. Okay? All right, standing for a quick. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the citizens, one nation, one liberty, and the free and equal opportunity of expression and of speech. Next, we are up to our consent agenda. That's a motion. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll sign with that.
Anything? Talking about professors?
Codeine in place.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passed. Give me one second. Okay, next is, we are for public comment. This is the time for comments on public matters that are not on the main agenda. Members of the audience are encouraged to briefly address the trustees on an issue that is not on the agenda. Chairman of the board will seek comments from the audience on significant items as they occur. Public matters do not include any pending legal matters, private personnel issues, or private student issues. Please do not attempt to address such issues at this time, or you will be ruled out of order. To ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak, each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit. Mr. Hane, public comment. Yes?
So my name is Will Hyatt. I'm on the Slidestech Life Board. I'm a representative for this area of the high school. And we are doing levy. And I'm here to speak for the levy. In a few weeks, I'm going to be a Flathead head on stage, having performances to some of the kids who play here in this unit. You've got 15 graduates that are graduating seniors. And then, a little later, I'm, Flathead High's going to open its door to your eighth graders coordinating risk and Cato. And they'll be starting at Flathead High. So, Flathead High hasn't passed a levy since 2007. When the money from 2007 levy ran out, Flathead High started to work with smaller budgets. Every year, they'd have to tighten the belt. And after 18 years, we're out of belt tightening. We robbed the piggy bank, and we juggled whatever we can juggle. When these kids get to school in the fall, we don't pass this levy, they're going to be in bigger classes. There's not going to be as many classes. They've got a special interest, that class might be gone. And some of our best teachers will have had early retirement, and they'll be gone. If we don't pass this levy, and we don't pass the next levy, then we've got to start cutting into our programs. Some of the programs are most loved in this ballot. So, we don't want to do any of that, that's why I'm here. I want to ask the board to please promote our levy. I've got materials here that I'll just leave, maybe, right here. Some posters, there's a slide presentation, if I can get it out. And some pamphlets. And some of the slides here are really good at showing what it is we're looking at in terms of budget and hiring. Thank you very much. Well, I live here in this district, and I know kids across the street who go here, and thank you for the job you're doing, excellent education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? We're going to move on to informational items and reports. First, we have administrator's report.
So, good afternoon, everybody, welcome. Thank you, board, for being here. Thank you, Lacy. So, my report is shorter tonight because the last report was a really long one. So first, I would like to tell you about kindergarten roundup. We scheduled a second roundup and ended up canceling it because we had three more students say that they would be attending that roundup. So the first one, we had nine, and this last one, we had to transfer three. So instead, we made individual appointments and canceled that roundup. So it's interesting because when I was looking, and I told you all this before, in 2024, it dates of birth, it was during COVID. So I don't know, I have a hunch that our kindergarten enrollment drop for a couple of years, like statewide, and then all of a sudden, I have a move, this COVID will be over, so it'll be safe to go back to the hospital. So that's my hunch, but I don't know for sure. So that's my hunch, anyway. Next thing, good news, we have an MTSS grant. We received the first part of this year for $5,000, and then we just got approved on the amendment for another $5,000. So, turned out to be $10,000 for this year for our multi-tiered systems of support. So with that money this summer, we will be sending five teachers to Bozeman to attend the summer institute. So that is great, it's always a wonderful experience. So they'll go for three days, and it's great, it's a great experience. Our student awards assembly is this Friday, so we will recognize perfect and outstanding attendance, citizenship, outstanding academics, and those who prove academic academic. So that is Friday, and it's going home in the newsletter, went home in the newsletter last week, and teachers are contacting their parents to let them know their child received an award. Missoula Children's Theater is coming April 28th. So auditions will be the 28th, and performances will be on the 3rd of May at 3:00 PM and at 5:30 PM. We will get that information out to parents. And I'd like to thank again Rick and Sarah Levy for hosting the directors of Missoula Children's Theater. Regarding facilities, our portable is up and running. We are using it for counseling with Mrs. Specht, for speech with Mrs. Hegel, and this getting, this Diggly are head to some testing, some students were gifted and talented, and we are waiting for the results of those assessments. So they were sent to, I think they were sent to California, I don't remember, but they were sent to be recorded of sport, so we will have those results sometime soon this week. We had a fire inspection, we passed. We needed to replace some exit lights because they don't light up, and there's no way to fix them, so they had to be replaced. So Jay has worked on that, he's ordered, somebody's getting those in process, and we passed that inspection. And then we had a safety inspection, and the police came and walked around our facilities, and they said that we need to get a Knox box, so that, like a key with a code, so that it doesn't breathe, so that they can get in at any time. So we need to get a new Knox box. And they recommended taller fencing for safety, and we went six feet or eight feet, so that we don't have kids trying to jump the fence because they have a three-foot fence. And they said that that would just be much better for our location to get that six-foot fence. So that's their recommendation. So when the router back goes in, I will be saying, hmm, yeah, can you help us with that financing? So even if they just provided the cost to replace the fence exactly as it is, and they would go for the difference, then it helps us get that safety fence that's six-foot. So, that is my report. Thank you.
Next, we're onto our courts report.
Okay. Quick highlight on cash reports, talking about PJ Club, it's still solvent, which is good, making it through the year. $800 for the good, so that's good news. We're almost to the end, so that's what makes us think, yeah, our first point is where we wanted to be. Do start thinking about next year. I know that from a billing perspective, this duty here, yeah, I know that from a billing perspective, it's a mess with the, how we're doing the $10, $12.
That part's not too bad. It's the families that get here at 3:35 and they're charging $36, and they're not paying, they're refusing. So I ended up taking it off because they're not going to pay. So I feel like we need a price point for like 10 minutes. $5, families do that late or something.
That's not something.
Huh?
That's not something that would make it more of a match for you.
It would be, I'd rather take, I'd rather charge $5 and give $5 than to take off $36. And just, we need a little bit of money so that they know they can pick up their kids late, because they're going to get charged something. But the families that I've had most of this done with have three to four kids, so it's $36 to $48, and they're arguing and not paying. Mrs. Matt had one sign a contract saying she wouldn't do it again, she still did it again, we still owe the money from that one. And I have a family that pays for, at the end of the year, for a bit, hasn't paid their bill, and I don't feel like those people should pay these people's bills because they're just flat accusing, it's not that they can't.
Did we ever have clarification on that when we decided not price point?
For what?
For like, the late part?
They have, if they're late picking them up from 5:30, that's $10 a minute per child.
These kids aren't late, they're literally just attending for like 10 or 15 minutes. So in other words, mom and dad are like picking them up from school, so they go to PJ Club.
It's not because there's an accident?
No, we have like two or three that get picked up by their siblings from the high school, have a hard time meeting them, and they're five or 10 minutes late.
Well, is that something you would, if we told, if you could, you could negotiate with them and give at least what they owe now?
I don't know, some of them I won't, I know one family can apply, so I know I won't get it from them.
I think that we should put, I'm going to put a line item on the agenda for our June agenda, once we're kind of done with the school year and have our actual number for PJ this year, and then we'll talk through things like that.
A lot of them go to the office and sit with Trish till they both get here, and that's what we're trying to avoid, so we can just charge them a little bit for the, like to 10 minutes and then at 15, they have to pay the amount, because that's really late.
Yeah, so food for thought for in June, we're going to definitely dig into that deeper. Thank you. I knew I'd say you want it. My other reports, revenue reports and the expenditure reports, they're pretty much spot on for where I would expect us to be at this time of the year. You can see that percentage-wise, we're pretty much equal to where we were last year at what we're spending. The one piece I want to point out on the Fund 15 report, which has been like this for a while, you know that the grants go negative because we spend the money and then ask for the money, but the Title I has been going negative and negative and negative and negative all year long, if you've been watching it. And now it's to the tune of like $113,000 to the negative.
We haven't got our check yet.
We have not got our check yet. However, I just got notification today that we have a huge deposit coming from them that will hit our account tomorrow. So, finally, it took a really long time, I finally had to reach out to OPI, and that's a process in itself right now. Finally got to the right person, found out that we apparently needed to submit an expenditure report that we didn't, we didn't submit. It's a $0 report because we're Title I schoolwide, but they still expect you to submit a report for Title IV and Title II and Title III, even though we don't, they're all $0 because they roll up into Title I for us. They were still expecting us to submit those reports and never notified me that they were missing or late. So, when I reached out for why they hadn't approved our cash request, they said, well, you're missing expenditure reports. So, it took me all three seconds to submit $0 expenditure reports. And then I had to have enough for the next two weeks to actually approve my cash request. And like I said, as of today, I got an email that we've got a big old check coming, to the tune of like $108, I think, because it's not the whole amount, because these are more expenditures than we have. So yeah, that's really good news.
The thing about that report is when you fill out the report, you have to complete all those little sections, but then you roll them over, so you complete all the Title II, Title IV, Title V, Title VI, you complete all of that stuff, and then you transfer it over to schoolwide. So even though you filled it out one time, and it transfers over, it's like there's no recall when you send it in that you even do that in the first place, so it's kind of a weird, weird reporting system.
And then, student agreement totals, I just added that on there, we're pretty much holding, I don't remember, we added one, but it's pretty much a hold at the moment. And then I'll just give a short election update. As you guys know, the Flathead County Election Department is running our election this year. We do have four people running for two spots. Try to say them alphabetically because that's how they're going to be listed. It's Cody Brown, Kyla, no, not Kyla yet, Joe Heidecker. What did I say? Did I say Cody? Jody Brown? Sorry. Jody Brown. I wouldn't have tried. Josh Hunt, Kyla Hutchendorf, and Joe Heidecker. Those are the four running, and there's two spots open because Rick's spot and Josh's spot are open. Election Day is May 6th. The ballots should be going out by the end of this week. The Flathead County Election Department mails out the ballots this year, since they're the ones running the election, but you'll be getting them. And it will actually be in conjunction with the Flathead High School levy, since the county's running it, you're going to get both of those things on one ballot now. So you're going to see the Flathead County levy, Flathead County, Flathead High School levy, wow, this is hard tonight apparently. Flathead High School levy, and then the trustee election at Smith Valley will all be on one ballot, which is kind of slick, because then you have one ballot. You can bring your ballot in here, we will have ballot boxes here at the school to collect them, just like we always have. You can mail it, which will go back to the Flathead County Election Department, or you can drop it off at the Flathead County Election Department. So you have options this year, whatever's convenient. Okay? Any questions on the election?
I have a question, so what's their time that, how, how they can determine the ballot here on that day?
On Election Day, 8 p.m. 8 p.m. on Election Day. Thank you. I think that's all I have for mine for that.
Okay. Next, we have, I have a noble commitment.
Are my clothes wet? You can? Why? You don't have to say anything.
Do you have to do it without a phone?
That's what I'm saying, you can cry, she's horrible.
You know, this is a hard decision. A very, very hard decision. Because I love each twin, each family, and your children. And, but my body says, quit happening anymore. So, I said, sorry, man, but, but I know that my heart's with the poor, and with the kids. And it's not that it needs to just be, but that I love you.
You can volunteer.
Just get a volunteer to read books in the library.
I can do that.
Do you need a substitute to do that, if you call him?
Well, I would probably, that depends upon what, no.
I can answer it anyways.
I didn't say what. No, but we'll see what, the Texas, not Texas, but the Montana retirement system has so many days, and then I can, before I can return. As soon as that's through, then yeah, I will come back and sub occasionally and whatever. But I'll come back and visit, I got to get my kid fixed. Got to come back, they're all like, to me, they're all like my grandkids. Some of them call me grandma, because I found out I'm as old as their grandma.
So what time can we drop our kids off?
Well, I, words probably can't express, and I probably speak for everybody. Thanks so much for, like I said, words can't express our gratitude, just love and care for everybody, speaking of kids. Thank you.
A noble one.
Yes.
Well, I want you to have, we would rather have her retired than marry her.
Yes, I'm very thankful that I'm here. Yeah, I always called the library, and I don't know if your kids told you this, it's the noble kingdom. And in my kingdom, the children, the girls are all princesses in my sacrifice court life. And that happens every day, right? Oh, yeah. And the boys are nice because they don't want to be princes. They're just like, no. You know, so they're nice, and they protect the kingdom, and are good.
That happens every day too, right?
Oh, yes, uh-huh. And I'm the queen. And so whenever I get law for attention, you know, some of the teachers go, "Piss, piss." I say, "Hark, har," and they say, "All hail the queen."
Well done.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I wish you the best too. All right, next, we are onto our action agenda. The following items are for consideration and possible action. First is personnel. Any offer of employment is contingent upon receipt of satisfactory criminal history background check and satisfactory drug and alcohol screening results. For some positions, receive satisfactory pre-employment screening. Before I move on to the next item, I'm going to kind of just set some parameters with how this is going to happen. It wasn't handled properly or the best in the past. Public will be open to comment. Negative comments will not be tolerated. You can say brief, vague things, like I have not had a positive interaction, but that's about it. If that's clear, otherwise I can stop you or. And that's it for the report. Okay? Okay, first item, consideration and possible actions renewed for non-renewed, non-tenured teachers. First, consideration of recommendation to non-renew without cause, employment of Sienna Diggly, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with MCA 20-4-206. Could, here the recommendation of non-renewed or Sienna Diggly.
Without cause.
Without cause. Go ahead, a second? One second? Any comment?
I would like to say that Rain had her for fifth grade, and she came in out of Mr. Fisher's class, and she was having such a struggle with her reading and her math, and a struggle with being bullied while she was in class continually. And she went into Ms. Diggly's class, and she didn't tolerate the bullying. She brought Rain's grades up, she had to go to summer school for reading, but she was caught up by the end of fifth grade, and she's doing so much better now. I just, I really wish it would renew.
I would also like to say, both of my kids have had Sienna. You know, as a new teacher, I feel like it always takes a little bit to get your footing and learn the ropes and stuff. And I know the board got my letter, and I just hope you guys can renew her contract. Both of my kids have just loved her, and Cruz absolutely endorsed her, so.
Yes, sir?
I'd just like to review the comments that were made before that my daughter was struggling when she got into her class, but Sienna really brought her back into where she needed to be and needed to, so she could actually be successful in sixth grade, where she was pretty far behind. But she didn't give up on her, and she didn't take it easy on her, she actually did the hard work she needed to do to get my daughter where she wanted to be. I'm super grateful for her.
Any other public comment? All right. First and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, I have consideration for recommendation to renew, to non-renew without cause, employment of Tracy Moon, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with MCA 20-4-206. Take the motion. I'm going to review the consideration of recommendation on non-renew without cause and finding Tracy Moon. Second. First and second. Any comments? For the comment, first and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, I have C. Evanson, fiscal year 25 MTSS coordinator, stipend $1,500. I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve C. Evanson, fiscal year 25 MTSS coordinator, stipend $15.
First and second, any further comments?
I would just like to say that this was included in the first part of the grant, but we never need the motion at the board meeting, so.
It's in the budget.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we are into 300 building discussion.
I can kind of pick this up, since I'm the one who kind of put it back on here. At the last board meeting, you guys made a motion to put the advertisement in the paper, and then I had sent out some information to the board, so I'm going to talk about it at the board meeting. I sent out information that I found out from MTSBA that we have to have an engineer or an architect, and/or an architect involved in the process, because it's a student-occupied building. So whether or not we choose to still advertise for the contractor, and then ask the contractor to hire the architect slash engineer, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of all of that before I put the ad in the paper, because it costs about $300 to run an advertisement in the paper. So for me, it was more cost-appropriate to talk to the board first, so I sent an email to them and just let them know, hey, I'm going to hold off until we can send back. I did reach out to Vice Chair, because the chair was not available at the time, and got confirmation of that, I didn't just make that decision on my own, but I wanted to make sure that the board was, had all of the information before we just spent $300 on an ad that doesn't make sense. So, that's why the discussion, I had this back on the table, even though the board took action at the last meeting, I kind of put the rigs and brought it back to the table. So, that's where we are, is what we found out essentially when I sent out to you guys in the emails. I'm just going to voice my concern, because I have the floor at the moment and can do so. I'm, I'm really concerned about spending our nest day, per se, if you want to call it, to bring that building back up to snuff, and I'm obviously more concerned with having to pay for an architect and/or an engineer, because we can all agree that that's going to exponentially increase the cost. I don't think there's anybody in the room that disagrees with that statement. My biggest concern is our bond just ended on the 100 building, which means that it just hit the 20-year mark. So, if we don't think that that building is going to need, or doesn't currently need maintenance, we're kidding ourselves. And this building is older than that building, and it also needs maintenance. So, my concern is using our building reserve fund, and/or our bourbon fund, and/or our inter-local fund, to bring that building back up to snuff, and putting ourselves in a bad position to be able to keep our current buildings running and operable and in good condition. So, there's my concerns, and I'll just put them out there. Obviously, ultimately, it's the board's decision, and the community can weigh in as well for you guys, but that's where, that's where I'm at, and whatever you guys decide is what you decide.
I have a question, and I can't explain it, but I have to kind of think of this. The question of, do we really need that building? If our, if our numbers are staying down the way they are, granted, yes, it would be great if we had our separate room for lunches and all that stuff, but a lot of schools use that for lunch. And reality is, that if we, if we end up in a problem, if we really will end up, if we use all our money, we're willing to put like, do it on a purpose of, which I've never thought of as fair as other communities. Because they don't give a shit. And I would rather, first of all, as much as I'd like to see that, I mean, it's great storage, because of people. And maybe we can think about, we can think about if some of our stores, you know, must have income from some of these containers up on top. If we're able to store all our papers and stuff in that building. It's not safe to have kids in, but it is more than scary enough to be using for that type of stuff.
And I would just like to add to that bond. As far as maintenance, the exterior, the 100 building, the lower part of it, the siding is peeling apart, so, so some of that's going to have to come off.
We know we have to do some stuff.
And then all of those heaters, they said it's going to start being in rotation where we have to replace. we have to replace some of them, start, start replacing them.
We have a waiting schedule for all of those.
Yes, yes, we do. And then this heater in this building, probably two or three more years, and they say it'll be bad, so they'll have to.
But this is always a non-spirited.
I, I think what would be a better plan, instead of trying to make a decision of, you know, head over another, figure out how adventurous life is gonna look, how ours, how many incoming students we're gonna have, and then maybe have the bullet committee come up with a ten-year plan of, hey, you know, let's evaluate one hundred, let's evaluate here, how much for the next ten years are we realistically gonna need, and then make that decision.
But the building's not perfectly, they, um, originally, when we were thinking of tearing it down, we were all under the understanding that the building was falling down a couple of years. And we looked at, you know, we went in, personally looked at the building, and it's got good bone stuff, there's, uh, the wood is not rocky. The only rocky wood you would find on that is maybe a windowsill or something, uh, frame wise, it's in good shape. I hope people will be able to have a deep look at that.
I heard, I recognized, I said that that building was sturdier than that building.
Oh, probably. Yeah.
I personally really like Cody's idea. I think, you know, our facilities committee, we've gotten really narrow-minded because our focus is just with three hundred building, three hundred building, three hundred building, and I think that that's a great, a great, yeah, and it's a great comment to look at our facilities, not our four thousand square feet of our facilities. I think that that's a really, Joe's nodding too, I think that's a really great idea for our facilities. I think that might be a good idea, just for my own, since I'm against.
I will, I will present the motion from what I'm meaning to have a touch of contract. Second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you guys.
Next.
Yeah, that's great.
We'll try to plan out facilities meeting, need it in a couple of weeks, and then just start filling in three more, or how we wanna evaluate.
Next is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, District Five, Neil Agreement. Everything's good, fine, we can go.
Oh, yeah. They've had a whole new crew from the taco person to the lead cook, and they can't count, but, you know, we'll carry our, come here.
Dorothy's very creative, you don't have enough pancakes to serve her, but she comes up with something.
We ordered a hundred forty, you got a hundred, all right, yeah, we'll just go feed a bunch of them today.
We'll just figure that out. She's really good at figuring it out.
You need to bring me the other phone, girl.
No, I got those beautiful items, I can, and I got the double freezer, there's all sorts of stuff in there that you can turn.
She stocks up on, on crustables to make, so she can feed them, feed those kids.
Uh, we will see that this contract is a little different, and in your's present, it looks different, and that's kind of what Dorothy's saying about, since they have new people in charge, they kind of revamped their contract, but Mrs. Matt read it cover to cover, and it was just like, yeah, it's a good passage, but it, it looks good.
Okay. I move that we accept the, District Five, Neil Agreement, twenty-five, twenty-six. All second. First and second, any further comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, MOA, Reuse Stars Act.
Give all your votes.
So, I move that we accept the memorandum of understanders for actually, um, for, agreement, memorandum of agreement for the Stars Act provided in, at this. I second. All in favor?
Um, yeah.
And especially as the path.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as, as, we sent out an email today to all staff and all board members, because there was a call to action on House Bill two fifty-two today.
How do they feel about it?
Um, it's moving positively, it's definitely going in the right direction, so, but it's actually on the floor now, so now this is like the imperative time, where it's actually getting voted on to go into law or not. So if you have the opportunity to grab that email I sent out today, and it is actually really fast, because I did it and it was really fast, you have to create an account and it's literally put in your email, create a password, and then you're in, and you can email the senators, and I even gave you guys in that email which senators to email. Couldn't find one of them in the search, just ignore that one if you can't find that one, but send it to the four, because they're the senators from our area, and then I just put in there why it was so imperative that they pass this, and for those of you that are sitting in the room and have no idea what we're talking about, um, the Stars Act is a bill in legislature right now that's going to get us additional funding, um, in our general fund, it goes directly into our general fund in the form of an additional quality educator payment for every certified staff member that we have on staff, which for our district comes to the tune of like sixty thousand dollars, which is a really big deal. And this MOA is a negotiation that the board did with the union to create a new salary grid that meets the minimum requirement of the Stars Act in order for us to be eligible to receive the funding that's in the bill. So it was awesome watching the union and the board get together with this, make a, make a decision about it, everybody was really excited. It's, I mean, we're already gonna move it, we're gonna pass it tonight, and then we just need the senate to do its job, and then we'll, we'll get to pay our teachers much better, let's put it that way.
Should I read negotiations?
Ignore that. I read a bit. I read a bit.
I do respect the play, I, it's really, it's, it's a very kind, um, piece of legislation for us, because we would never be able to put our teachers where this is going to work.
And as teachers who have chosen to stay in this district, because we prefer the smaller districts, we have consistently benefited anywhere from eight to twelve thousand dollars less per year than what a teacher in a district like this.
Especially.
Per year.
Especially our base, our base.
Our base teachers are.
So just to give this to like a ten thousand foot view for those people in the room, our current base is thirty-one, five eighty-seven. This is gonna bring our base pay for teachers up to forty-one, six ninety-seven. Kind of pulling that through.
Six ninety-five.
Six ninety-five, so close, forty-one, six ninety-five. So a huge win, um, and ninety-five percent of it is gonna be paid just purely by the legislature, it's gonna cost the school district like seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars to be able to pay our base teachers ten thousand more dollars, as well as give all of our current teachers significant raises for going forward. So this is a huge piece of law that we're trying to get in effect so far, like, like we're saying, it's positive, it's going through, it looks like it's going to pass, but if you have the opportunity to send an email to legislators, go home, do it tonight. It's really important that it passes. It'll, it, yeah, correct. Time is of the essence, don't wait.
It gives all of our, all of us closer, adjusting ourselves, giving all the chance to be on the road with other districts, it's a huge, we've never got off to do it.
Okay. Further discussion? Uh, I have a first and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have DCS quote for new phone system.
And I'm, I was gonna say, I'm gonna stop you guys, we're gonna, I'm gonna, um, ask you guys to table this one. Uh, Kelsey and I met about it today, and we wanna just do a little bit more research, and I know one of the first questions the board always comes to us with is, have you guys looked into other options? Have you tried other methods? I'm looking at June. So, Kelsey and I are digging deeper, and then we'll either have a special board meeting or we'll talk about it at the main meeting, so.
Wasn't this, was this last year too?
We've been working on it for a couple of years.
Couple of years, okay.
So we kind of have dinos, a dinosaur phone system, and at least twice a month, probably, there's bots that try to hack into the phone system, so it's actually really, it is not safe.
Okay.
For our school right now, so we, we do need to look at something.
And then anytime we have a power failure, if something happens to our phones, and so our phones are not capable for a lot of that.
Can we just get extra power?
So it's a problem.
So I don't know, you guys can, I think we're probably gonna make a motion to table it, even though it was for discussion of possible action, just.
We don't have to have a motion, but we can have, if you prefer. Okay? Okay? That sounds good. I will do that. We're gonna table DCS quote for new phone system. We lose our action agenda, uh, no correspondence, no special discussion, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.